Let's call this meeting open at 7:14 PM. There we are, we're all in agreement for once, my God. Prayer, Councilor Grimma, please. Lord, persons that are present in this room have different ways of expressing themselves, different ways of channeling their emotions and their decision-taking. May we combine clarity of mind and goodness of heart, may we be impartial without bending to stronger personalities, may we sacrifice selfishness for the good of the whole, please shed light on our decisions and our deliberations and help us to accomplish our work with love and with a fair vision of the greater well-being of those we represent. May you name, be glorified through our efforts. Amen. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions to this particular agenda? Mayor, Councilor Lallon, should I say, yes, Mr. Mayor? It's a request for sponsorship for the Midget AAA Ontario Tournament. I'd like to add this as a potential sponsorship recipient, if I might make use of that term. I'd also make a request for council's consideration to help out the Clarence Rockland Public Library to obtain further money, further money they would need with regards to the $20 million fund that they're already, that has already been earmarked. Anyone else? All those in favor? Carry it then. Disclosures of peculiar interests? None? Let's go on to announcements. I only have one. Mr. Lallon? Well, yesterday I attended, I attended the second edition of the Spelling Bee. I was very proud of the youngsters and the not-so-young individuals that took part in this event and were called upon to memorize a certain number of words and they had to go over and beyond that, of course. They were called upon to spell words that they were not familiar with, they went very well. You have to mention that, we have to mention that there were double number of participants as there were last year. Yes, of course, there were two schools that participated last year, there were eight this year. It was very well organized. I even attended when somebody objected to the spelling of a certain word, and they viewed a tape, because everything was videotaped, of course, or taped, to determine whether or not there was a mistake that had been made or not. It was very well conducted. Mr. Lallon, if people on council remember that there was a lady that made a presentation to obtain further financing for the female hockey team at the Lescais School. Tournament was held today for the second consecutive year. The Lescais girls' hockey team won the regionals and are going in a few weeks to Timmins for the provincial tournament, so congratulations to the ladies. And I went to see the hockey game, they played real good hockey. They're in a much higher class than you and myself, by the way, Mr. Mayor. I can tell you that Councilor Grimma also does hold a candle to these ladies. Yes, and my second announcement is this. Councilor Lallon and the mayor was attended with me last Saturday. We all three attended the Sugar Bush Supper to benefit this Roger Seguin Treatment Centre. There were over 200 individuals that attended this event. More than $4,000 were raised. The purpose of this particular event was to inform people of this particular project. I believe the Lions Club made a donation also? Yes, the Clarence Creek Lions Club also donated 50 or some odd acres of land. See, the provincial government required that all licensed C property, need to be licensed, properties need to be licensed as license A, and I can guarantee you that the Roger Seguin Residence is very well administered, as opposed to the Prescott Russell Residence. Councilor Lallon? Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, and we've also requested to the province to obtain additional funds, and there's a telethon that will be televised at the end of March with the help of TVC22, and it will be holding a major golf tournament at the end of June, so we are sponsoring a bevy of fundraising activities, and let's hope that something positive comes out of all of this. Let's mention also that $1,250,000 given to the, by the United Cities of Prescott Russell, taken for the reserve funds for the past two years to help build a new building there. Mr. Mayor, I can mention that there was a huge hockey tournament, CIA golf tournament. There were teams from New Brunswick, two teams from Sherbrooke, one from Niagara Falls from Toronto, many teams from all across Quebec. Motel facilities were full up here as of last Thursday, and the rest, the surplus, was sent over to Orleans. So it was quite success, quite a success. Unfortunately, there was no publicity around this particular event. I have a list in hand, there were 31 teams that took part in this tournament, the U-18 and U-16, a whole bunch of scouts present at that tournament, even Alfredson was there. All right, question period. If you have a question period to ask, you have three minutes, come forward, give your name and your address. I won't say like, they would say in TVC22, what's your credit card number and your social insurance number? They always ask us that around New Year's Day. But if you have you a question, though, step forward to the mic and make us aware of what's on your mind. My name is Roland LaBonti, Mr. Mayor, and I would like to know how much budget was set aside to resolve the ditch problem over on my daughter's property. Mr. LaBonti, we had a meeting last Thursday at 10 o'clock and you didn't even show up. No. You didn't even give us a call to tell us that you weren't going to attend, and my intent is not to lose any more time on this. Well, how much time did I show up and nobody showed up for me, and now you're asking me? You bothered to show up? Mrs. Sima showed up, but why did no others showed up? Look, you wanted to see the towns engineer, he was here. It was the towns engineer? Oh, well, he's not the one that drew up the plans. It didn't give me anything. It doesn't amount to anything to explain to an engineer what another engineer's plan is. He's the one that holds, he would have laughed me straight at my face and lose my time, yeah? Okay, have him come in front of the public forum here and explain his engineer's plan. Not behind closed doors, but publicly. I won't be there, I won't attend there just to be laughed at, I won't attend there. No, 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 my daughter doesn't have any time, any money to squander. I just want to know how much budget has been set aside. We're up to $80,000. We told you that we're going to fix this problem this coming spring. You said that last year, the year before, the year before, and the year before, to fix something up. The well, the trees, we made you an offer for trees. You gave $15,000 to a legal counsel and $1,000 to my daughter, and we'd come up with an estimate of $2,800 with local contractors, we'd have local people to work on this, not to my daughter, she wouldn't have made any profit out of that, but no, you give $15,000 to a lawyer. Please explain yourself to me. I have, I owe you no explanation, sir. Well, why? Oh, oh, it's taxpayers' money, so you'll squander this? If you listen to me? Well, it doesn't matter, because you'll repeat, repeat, it's like an old record playing over and over again. I heard the same song before, from the mayor before you, and before you, and before you. Yeah, I've been sitting at town council table now for the past 12 years, and I've been hearing you for the same 12 years. So it's always the same record that plays along. You have the right, but where does our money go to? All you have to do is to consult the budget, and I'll show you where your money goes to. So step up to the town hall. Yeah, and I'll attend, you're gonna have to come back, I'm gonna be asked to come back in a month now. Just show me what the budget is for the ditch. Show me how much you're gonna, how much of the amount that you're going to spend on my ditch. You could have learnt all of what needed to be done on that Thursday morning, I had the towns engineer there waiting for you on your property. Well, sir, I didn't see anybody. See, you made us waste our time. Well, you have three minutes set aside for question period. Your three minutes is up, Mr. LaBonti. Let somebody else have the mic. Well, don't tell me that you lost your time. No, but on that Thursday morning, we waited for you, and we waited for you, that's when we lost our time. Sir, you were right at the town hall at your office. Well, the engineer was there, we waited for you, you didn't show up. Oh, sure, so he left his work to attend to my needs? Sure. Look, are there any other questions? That's it? Any questions? If you have any questions or comments to make, you have three minutes, and give us your name, your address, and then go forward. I wasn't scheduled to come here tonight, Mr. Mayor. It's always nice to see you, Mr. Gonzalez, in any event. Could you give us your name and your address? 3587 Labelle Road. I just came to thank council for the support and what you did on the road. Yes, I believe that Mr. Julien Lanarche addressed your concerns. I know it's a muddy mess, like every word, I was watching again this morning, CCTV, and they were saying how the city of Ottawa sticks or fixes 42, has fixed 42,000 potholes so far, they still have a lot. We were in Toronto, and even then, we had to watch potholes there, because, so, it's a bad winter. It will all be good in May, I'm sure. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for your great effort. Thank you. Any other comments or any other questions? Any other comments or questions? Thank you. All right now, let's go on now, council members' items, Mr. Lallon. I'll just, I have the information in hand there, and I'll just hand it over to other members. Yeah? Give it over to Mrs. Sima. Yes, I've already received your documents. That's fine, that's fine. Consent items? We're still at consent items? That's fine, please. Oh, he's distributing his documents judiciously. Mr. Mayor? Madam Clerk, was this included in tonight's correspondence? I believe it was. Now, usually, I would have flagged this document and asked that it be dealt with in a regular meeting or Committee of the Whole meeting. This is a request that stems from, well, that deals with the Eastern Ontario Hockey Tournament, that's going to be hosted by the Clarence Rockland Arena, and they're asking that involves District 3, that involves those players in Eastern Ontario. Tournament held in between the 2nd to the 8th of April next, and they'd like to obtain some sort of monetary contribution from council to help them out with this particular event. Mr. Bouchier, do you have any comments as to this? Well, I didn't receive the request, the only thing I can say, though, is that I don't believe that this is a nonprofit organization that is recognized under our definition of nonprofit organizations. We're dealing with District 3 here, folks, and not a local association, so they don't meet the criteria with regards to our existing policy. Councilor Lallon, are there any registration fees for those that do take part in this particular tournament? Well, this is not what's indicated in the letter, because I believe that the registration fees are quite high, that allows people to take part in the tournament to pay for ice rink time. Is that, I see Mrs. Jackie Burton's name there, is that the same tournament that was organized last year? Well, it's not the same tournament, Mr. Mayor, same type of flavour of tournament, but not involve the same caliber of players, however, this year. Well, you have the Rockland team, of course, that's going to take part in all of this, I see. This is a request that had been inserted into the correspondence section, we should have dealt with this before this time, but I'm asking that you consider it. What I propose is that we support with, along with the modest sum of $500, we support this endeavor. I believe last year we'd given, do you recall the amount that we'd given to these good folks? I don't recall. I believe it was a service request they'd made last year, but if memory serves me right, I think we contributed close to $2,000 last year. It's quite possible, quite possible. I move, Mr. Mayor, that if there are some town councillors that like to promote this, we can dip into our discretionary budget to offset this request. Yes, I'm just asking that, in any event, if anybody considers it worthwhile, we could do so. How many players do we have in the AAA hockey teams? We have very little local players playing at the Midget level for AAA teams. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lallon. That's the lady that asked, the lady asked me to bring this to your attention. Well, those who are in favor of sponsoring these good folks, just put down your name along with the amount that you're willing to give from your budgetary account. Mrs. Sima, I've received a request from the public library. Oh, well, let's just cut discussions right here. Well, the Government of Ontario, Mr. Mayor, had imposed a freeze on their budget about 20 years ago, and the library has only asked that we encourage them. And that we support their request to obtain further funds, that we encourage the province to lift that freeze that they imposed 20 years ago. Whereas public libraries provide safe and inclusive community spaces where everyone is welcome to learn, work, connect, and have fun, and whereas the Clarence Rockland Public Library actively partners with the community to deliver valued services and contribute to a culture of social good by sharing knowledge and resources, and whereas the Clarence and Rockland Public Library continues to deliver services that promote provincial initiatives, poverty reduction, lifelong learning and skill development, local economic development, health, literacy, and provide equitable access to provincial government websites and provincial services, and whereas the Clarence Rockland Public Library continues to have limited resources budget. Now therefore be resolved that the city council supports the Clarence Rockland Public Library's request for the Government of Ontario to release the 20-year freeze of public library funding. This initiative has been spearheaded by the Ontario Library Association and the Federation of Ontario Public Libraries, and be resolved that the city of Clarence and Rockland urges the province of Ontario to recognize the contribution of local libraries within their communities and to cease the 20-year budget freeze to local libraries in an acknowledgement of the services they offer to all residents, and be it resolved that the city of Clarence and Rockland urge the province of Ontario to reinstate adequate and appropriate funding for all local libraries, increasing each year going forward in line with the Consumer Price Index, and be it resolved also that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Minister of Tourism, Culture, and Sports, the Ontario Minister of Municipal Affairs, the local MPPs, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Ontario Library Association, the Federation of Ontario Public Libraries, and to local area municipalities. I would add to that to send it to AMO, the Association, AMO, should I say, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, that way it will be sent. You know, we had one of those resolutions that were sent not too long ago by the fire department, and it was really well backed up, was well received and backed, so I would add that to the AMO. So do I have to make an amendment for that? Well, I second the motion. Seconded by Councilor Grimma. Do I have to propose to make an amendment to add AMO? No, no, that's fine. Councilor Lallon? Mrs. Sima, do you mean that there are no grants at all given to public libraries? Are we talking about the freeze of a certain amount? Amount, they do receive money, yes, they do receive money from the provincial government, yes, but there's a freeze that has been imposed on the amount of money received. I see. All those in favor? Carry it, that's fine. All right then. Consent items. Are there any items that you'd wish to withdraw from consent items? Yes. Item 8.3A, B, and C. I'm going to ask that we withdraw also 8.4. Councilor Sima, would you please read those items? Under item A, be it resolved that the following items, as identified under consent items, appearing on the agenda of the regular meeting of the 5th of March 2018, be adopted. Item 8.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. A, regular meeting of February 21st 2018, and B, Committee of the Whole Meeting of February 21st 2018. 8.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A, Public Library Board Minutes, December 17, 2017, and B, Environment Advisory Committee, November 21st 2017, seconded by Councilor Zant. All those in favor? Carry it. Thank you. Councilor Lallon? 8.3A, be it resolved that the council adopts the street lighting policy as identified in report INFo2018-002, seconded by Councilor Grimma. Go ahead. When I took a look at the report, Mr. Mayor, and I've already asked this particular question to members of town administration, I take a look at pages 17, 18, and 25 of the particular report I'm referring to. Page 17 states that we'll be installing a banner I? What do you mean? You're referring to the policy here? Mr. Lanarche? Let me see here. Well, in fact, Mr. Mayor, I believe it can be more easily explained in this particular fashion. See, the policy has been drawn up for new developments and not for existing lighting, so the new developments now need to respect the policy as it has been adopted and enacted. So what you've asked with regards to banner I, that deals with new installations now for the existing lighting. Now, the only thing we'll be doing is this, we'll be respecting, well, we'll be converting to LED the existing lighting facilities. The heat that is emitted from these lighting fixtures is something like 2, 3,000 BTUs, is because that's, that's the only place where you can put in benches on Laurier Street and, or banners on Laurier Street, should I say, not benches, but banners during a holiday period. So it's the only place where you're gonna put in banners in between posts there. Well, are we going to install banners and individual development projects? Well, different lights will be installed in different installations or different areas. This department will be, this is subject to a department approval, yes, of course. We have guidelines to follow, but we have details that we've implemented with regards to construction. This is the standard that we're using, however, however, this standard or standards apply to different areas. For example, a street that we consider a collector's street will have a different motif, if I might use that term, than a local street, but we're dealing with different lighting apparatus. Well, page 18 states the following. Banner I, dealing with the streetlights, they are located inside the sidewalk property. If we reinstall lighting where they are right now, four were never replaced in the past, four of them were never replaced, and trucks go by there and, you know, hit them. Are you specifically talking about Laurier Street? Yes, it's because you see Laurier Street now, when we're going to be involved in the downtown revamping project, the Laurier Street lighting, well, you see, there's going to be a plan specifically addressing Laurier Street. It will deal with the lighting distance, distancing between the lights and other objects, so that when a developer is called upon to build a subdivision, there are no lights, there are no posts, and we continue on with this subdivision. Now, in the past, we didn't have an approved standard that oversaw this, there were some lights that were subject to developers' whims and the subdivision's needs. This is a guide that will standardize, and this guy that you're referring to will standardize all types of lighting throughout Clarence and Rockland. So in subdivisions, we won't have the banner I, this particular metalic arm that, for banners. Well, the only thing that we'll do is this, if the light is not LED lighting, we'll convert it into LED lighting. We won't change, there's no changes brought about to existing lighting, the post or anything like that. This is a capital expenditure project that will be implemented as of 2018, just to change those lights, transform those lights into LED lights, but the rest of the posted remains the same. But, Mr. Lallon, in residential, the question, the question is, will there be banners in residential areas? No, in new subdivisions. As of now, that's right. Well, it's interesting, though, to note how much we'll be saving. $975,000 worth of hydro costs that we'll be saving, or kilo, I'm sorry, kilowatt-hours, but we're saving quite, quite, quite a hefty amount. How much money-wise are we saving? About $200,000, Mr. Mayor, implementing our new policy. Well, we estimated a variance of $219,000. So will you be saving on maintenance and hydro bills? I know that we were saving a couple of bucks here, there, everywhere, $219, what a, $19,000, that's great, great news. The other question I had was with regards to page 25. This content deals only with what is found on Laurier Street, but if we take a look at this, therefore, luminance cannot be used for sidewalk lighting. This is what it states now. I hope that when we do change lights on Laurier Streets, that they will be installed inside the sidewalk property. I remember when things were installed initially, they had a pipe going through the sidewalk, and the snowplow during the wintertime has a hard time to go by there, it leaves a little bit of snow around each and every individual streetlight there, and this happened quite often around the Central Zephyria, there are three, four that are still missing. Yes, I know that we also revised our standard with regards to the cross-section on Dubé Street and where the lighting will be installed, outside of the sidewalk proper, but with regards to Laurier, there will be a different plan drafted, exclusively catering to the needs of Laurier Street. This will be brought back to town council for further consideration, will it not? Yes, it will. So shall we vote on this? Let's vote all four at once. Seconded by Councilor Zant, all those in favor, carry it, and thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Lallon. Whereas the city of Clarence and Rockland deems it necessary to close the CIA, CIA access on Highway 17 and to replace it by the Clarence Crossing Project, be it resolved that council authorizes the mayor and the clerk to sign the letter of intent dated the 28th of November 2017 with regards to the sharing of costs for the intersection, and be it also resolved that town council also recommend that the estimate of costs to $195,000 for the closing of the access ramp, including the construction of traffic lights, be considered during the budget process to be entered into for 2019, and be it resolved also that council also recommend that an amount of $250,000 be included in the next study to be commissioned with regards to development fees. Need someone to second this motion before proceeding? Councilor Zant? Mr. Mayor, I proceeded to a lot of research. Now, when the access ramp or the entrance was installed for the hockey academy, the city of Clarence and Rockland was supposed to build a left-hand turning line. They had three years to do so, they haven't done so. Now, this has been built since 2011. Now, what bothers me is that it's going to cost, gone a cost of over $600,000 at present, but there's an environmental study that has been commissioned for the widening of Highway 17. So we want to make sure that there's an amount of money that will be included in the four-lane construction. Well, we're not deciding upon this, this is going to be sent for further consideration of the 2019 budget, we're not going to decide this issue, the next council will. I know what you mean, Mr. Mayor, but we should invest the $600,000 in industrial and commercial investment. It says here that this amount should be considered. Right, we did so in previous years, Mr. Mayor, you considered it. No, we sent, we're sending it over for consideration. I consider it as a surplus expenditure, a needless expenditure. There was a letter that was sent to us by the Novatec company, Mr. Mayor, and it states, Clarence Crossing has paid $300,000, Clarence Rockland $100,000, and it amounts to a total of $450,000. Why are we giving $450,000? They said that they're stand-ready, they stand-ready to pay $450,000. What's most pressing is to open up the access in between Park Industrial, Industrial Park and that venue, so that cars go by there, because we've, you know, we've had very serious accidents where cars wished to turn left and cars were broad-sighted, and the Ontario provincial police suggested that we close this intersection down. Mr. Clément said that there's nothing, said that there is nothing that prevents you from paving right up to where the fence is. There's not much leeway there for us to do so. Well, they did so for the other access. Well, if they entered through the industrial park, they can do so by that particular access point. Well, the entrance that leads onto the Well, the entrance that leads onto the EQ Home Development will certainly cause more accidents. People are used to enter by that way and all of a sudden there'll be a, there'll be a gate put up there preventing them from going any further. Well, there'll be forewarned, there'll be warned much ahead, ahead of time before this barrier is set up. Well, I'm against this, Mr. Mayor. We should have money to develop our industrial and commercial sector. There's over and above six hundred thousand dollars that we'll be spending. The, the light, lighting arrangement around the EQ Home Development, the counties were supposed to take care of putting up this lighting, these lighting fixtures. I can't approve this, but this has been brought back to the two thousand and nineteen budget for further consideration then. Councilor Zant, just to complete Mr. Lalonde's thoughts, it's important during the last budget that we adopted. It was important for us to consider those expenditures included in the budget then, but the tax rate had already been worked in with the figures that we were, we'd included. I'm asking that this particular item be really set apart exclusively during the next round of budgetary talks. There was access points, there was a different access points to be considered. There was a widening of, potential widening of some roadways to accommodate industrial needs and additional lighting. I know, Mr. Lalonde states that this is for future consideration of future Town Councils. Council, Councilor Grimaldi, maybe I was absent during that meeting, but I'm in agreement with what Councilalonde states. There's a lot, a great deal of uncertainty at present with regards to this, and I would ask that this be removed before even consider. Well, maybe sometimes I consider purchases and then I, upon second thought, I don't go ahead with those. Well, let's just take a look at the entranceway and let's, and if we deem that the industrial access there is well catered to, then that's fine. But, you know, we're talking about widening that area and we'll have to put in money. Well, this area will have to be revamped, reworked completely. There's no complete solution, there's no satisfactory blanket solution. But I just add on to what Councilor Grimaldi stated during the last meeting, and I even stated that it should not cost us that much. Just set up a temporary cement barricade there to determine whether or not this new roadway will work out or not. We don't have to do all of this that has been, all of this work that has been suggested here. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to pinpoint a few things now. The amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is, that we're asked to add on to the assessment of the process is to cater to the needs of the Laurier four seventeen needs, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because it allows us to meet the criteria set out by the United Counties of Prescott and Russell and all, set out by our official plan. Once this is done, the one hundred thousand dollars earmarked for the lighting, or one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars earmarked for the lighting, is set aside to close this entrance officially. Now, the one hundred or the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar lighting needs are necessary to be met once a school is built or a commercial establishment is set up in this particular subdivision. It will be necessary in any event this year to be put up. But if there are no schools built yet and commercial does not develop in that area, well, given with discussions we've entered into with the entrepreneur, with the developer, we anticipate that we'll, it will be necessary to do so in two thousand and nineteen. So the purpose behind all of this, Mr. Mayor, is to basically, it will become, is to take this particular thought, is to adopt this philosophy. It will be necessary at one point in time, we should put money into the existing entrance. It could remain as it is right now, however, some modifications need to be brought to it because of the laws governing left-hand or right-hand turns, as well as some sewage implements there that might be, that might need to be, need to be repaired. So let's not, we, in two thousand and nineteen, if it's approved, that one hundred and seventy, one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar amount is approved by council, from an official standpoint, we would remove asphalt and put, put some turf over that. But we can resort to alternative plans with, Mr. Zant, there are too many variables right now. Look, we don't know if the school will be there, will be built there or when. We don't know when the highway will be widened, even if it will be widened. We know what happens with the provincial government or with the federal government, we know what's happening. As Carl has stated, forget about that for now, until we have more meat on this project, there are just too many areas, the gray areas. I would like to close this temporarily, once the road is widened at the back, you know, it can, we can deal with it from an industrial standpoint, but you know, to close an entranceway permanently, to add lighting fixtures there. We have no plans, nothing's written down, we're going about this blindly, there are no schools. Well, they can bring this back when they enter into budgetary talks in two thousand and nineteen. Look, Mr. Mayor, with regards to the plan, and I spoke to this gentleman there. The provincial plan, the plan from the province, stemming from the province, does show that the exit east of Rockland is closed up. It is shown on the plan. If the province wants it closed, why put in money? Why would, should we put in money? You know, I find, I find, look, look, if we're saying that, you know, we're starting to invest money in there, it's like we're, you know, we're just throwing our hands up in the air and saying, well, we have no other further chance of obtaining further relief for the widening of Highway seventeen. Well, I appreciate the plan, we have to follow along with our mandate. There was great effort on the part of our department to plan much in advance what needs to be done. Look, we'll review our two thousand and nineteen budget at the time in which it will be reviewed. We can consider this item for, for the two thousand and nineteen budget. And if we defer this for a further date, have we planned that the industrial facilities will be widened this year? Yes, 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 that has been planned for, yes. We're not talking about a big amount, we're not talking about a lot of work to be performed, but in any, that's the least expensive thing to, for us to get involved in. Are we still going to put up barricades again this year? Yes, yes, I can't see any problems with this. Anyways, we will be made aware of as to when this will be done, yes, yes. So it's a matter of just deferring this matter and bringing it back to the next round of budgetary talks for further discussion. Fine, all those in favor, deferred, deferred until, until the next budget now, until October. Next item will be, this next item will be dealt with by the next council. Next item, Mr. Lalonde, be it resolved, yes, Mr. Mayor, that council adopt the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one strategic plan as recommended. Very good. Councilor Zant, I need someone to second this, my motion, yes. Mr. Mayor, I took a look at the strategic plan from start to finish. What are we undertaking to do through this? Mr. Darsh, there are many things in this, in this plan here, we're saying that we're passing this, we're enacting this. Council approved the two thousand and fifteen to two, twenty-one strategic plan as recommended. But what, what do we want to do with that then? Are we planning, are we planning, are we, are we going, are you going, come, going to come back to council with some further recommendations? Well, we have to limit the strategic plan, there's a component here that refers to implementation. And I think in answer to your question, there, well, the strategic priorities that are set out there will be transferred to certain members of staff to carry out some of the activities that are associated with that. There will be regular reporting back through the CIO and then to council. And then there will be a year-end wrap-up about how we are doing with the strategic plan. Now, what we've tried to do in that section is just to indicate that it's going to be a living document. You know, a lot of the time strategic plans get approved and then they gather dust on the shelves. So we've indicated in that implementation section. And I'm just, let's see, looking forward here in the index and for members of council, I believe it's fifteen. Appendix, no, 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 it's not fifteen, just a minute, it's on implementation and monitoring, if you take a look at page fifteen. Page fifteen of the document. All right, now you'll see, and I'll just take a moment to highlight those, you'll see the assignment of responsibilities. And so each one of the strategic plan priorities has assigned that priority to a lead department. And that lead department will make sure that the activities that are identified in the appendix there are assigned to staff members to carry out. And then there will be regular reporting on how these activities are progressing. And the performance reviews of staff will include in their goals and objectives, following up on those strategic priorities. Because the one thing I think that we want to see here is regular performance reviews where staff are held accountable for the priorities that they're given. And then there will be annual budget requirements that will come out of that. That's why if there is some concern of council, we do identify some extent, instances where there might be some external consulting services that may be required, that will be done through the budget review process if needed. Now, but then there's that reporting to council that I've talked about. And I see at least twice a year, you'll get a status report on how we are doing with the strategic plan. That'll be through Helen Collier's office and I then, I think, the CIO will be giving you a year-end wrap-up on how, what we're, how we're doing on any number of issues, but certainly on the strategic plan. Well, exactly, you refer to page fifteen here. You see, I have that circled already, I see. In all budgets, the administration will ensure that funding to implement strategic priorities are reflected in the draft capital, work and operating program component. Now, what I'd like to make sure of is this, the proposal will come back for final approval by the council. Yes, yes, and because you see, there are some areas here lately, when I attend the Chamber of Commerce meetings, especially their annual meeting, they, they present some things to the people. The mayor had to leave a bit early because you had other activities to attend to, but the Main Street proposal, I hope, will work with the Chamber of Commerce folks. They came up with a whole different plan for Main Street. Yes, they came to my office and they, they showed me this plan, yes. It's very important, Mr. Mayor, you know, to determine, to, to, you see, this gentleman, there was a gentleman said, well, we hope that we, they won't do what they did with Central Seaf Boulevard in Orleans, it's a real mess. They don't want this to happen here in Rockland. Yes, we've come up with a real plan with the Chamber of Commerce of Rockland on that. I think that's the intention of the plan, the lead department will make responsible, will make it, will make, will ensure that the lead department is responsible. And the work that you'll be done with your downtown core, your Laurier Street project, that they are part, that the Chamber of Commerce is part and parcel of the project, that's what I said. That's what I said, yeah, yeah. The only thing where I anticipated that there was concern on the part of the council, you'll see that a few of the strategic initiatives that we identified, that it was, that was with regard to appointments. We assess that we might go external, we might be able to use external staff. If not, or existing staff, should I say, if not, it'll go back to council. But the approval of this council is in no way intending that you'll be approving its funding for these projects, they would come back separately. Because really, really, look, the strategic planning that we do have, when I looked at it, the twenty-four meetings that we had, only one point ninety-three percent of the population attended those meetings. One point nine three percent of the meet, the population. Yes, but that's the challenge with any public process, you know, it's trying to get a good, strong representative stamping. But I, I believe that the strategic initiatives that they're identifying, that they've identified here is a combination of what we've heard from the public through the consultation process. But there are also things that we've heard from members of council and that staff believe in. It's sort of like a hybrid of those, and I, I, look, it's aggressive. When you look at that table that we put in there in Appendix C on page thirty-six, it's aggressive. But you can see that the lead departments and you can also see all of the other departments and feed into that. So it's a very aggressive strategic plan. I'm confident it will work, I appreciate your confidence, Councilor Levad. It's a very nice plan, Mr. Mayor, but this, monitoring the progress of all objectives that are set out in the plan, it'll be a full-time job for somebody taking care of that. So do we foresee in the future having one person taking care of all of the departments, I guess, Mrs. Collier? Well, the attention at this point and the way it's done in other municipalities, so that when we bring the budget to you, the strategic objectives will be identified with those capital projects. So it's going to be easier for you to see which projects are being achieved under that initiative. And then in the reporting, and I believe it's going to be at the next council meeting, you'll be able to see how we're going to report the capital projects to you and the objectives there for the strategic plan are identified. It's a two-page document that's going to give you a list of all capital projects, the objectives they're meeting. So it's going to become, well, it's part of our director's meeting now and it's, it'll become very routine for us to keep that up to date, okay? Councilor Lalonde, Mr. Darsh, we talked briefly about this issue before, before the council meeting. But since, Mr. Lalonde Senior had brought up this budget, this part, a point about implementing funding and attacking it during the next, but, round of budgetary talks. But for the people of Bourget and Clarence Creek, their need is to get something done and to implement some sort of sewer project. It's much needed, so should one of those strategic areas be focused on addressing that in the future? Since we already have that presented in, our documents, we already have a project in Bourget and Clarence Creek lined up under DC. Well, you see, South Nation is working with Bourget and Clarence, eh, might come up with a good solution and we might have another contractor in Clarence Creek that might have another solution. If we wait for those, that might be more responsible financially for us, and right now, there are no grants and it would cost the future to have sewers put in. And I think, Mr. Darsh, that we can always add this down the road, can we not? Well, yes, council always, council always has the ability to reopen your strategic plan. And I guess in response to that, when we try to deal with initiatives that are corporate-wide, you'll notice when you look at the various strategic priorities, there are very few that are project-specific. The only one that jumps to mind for me in this plan is Highway one seventy-four slash seventeen. And that's only because it's not even a project, it's in our control, we have a vested interest. But a lot of the infrastructure needs that are out there are identified either through our asset management analysis or our development charges. And I think in case where there are similarities here, they're already in there right now, those development charges. But we'll be revisiting that and we have to take a hard look at what's involved in providing for sewers. And, and I don't want to get into Julien's, Julien's territory here, but there's a report that council commissioned quite a number of years back. And consulting firm did a study and they looked at the options as to how you could do that, you know, provide sewers. There are different options, of course, a system that connects to, well, that's a report that should be coming forth to council and Julien and I certainly have not determined when this will be implemented, but it's a report that you should see because it's going to map out what is required for us. It's not as simple as saying that we're going, saying that we're going to put these sewers in. I think that right now, we went and obtained the grant for water connections, two water connections, one in Clarence Creek and one in Bourget, that was the main thing. And I think you can only apply for one of those grants if it was, maybe I'm wrong, Mr. Corry, Mrs. Collier, correct me if I'm wrong. Water was important because we needed water for both of them, we needed a second line for both villages. That was the most important point, right now, the next item will also be down the road in looking to obtain grants. Without a grant, it's going to cost a fortune to residents. It's just that I don't want us to get lost in this shuffle. Well, it's not in the strategic plan, much like Mr. Darsh has stated, it's already included in the development charges. Councilor Bordele, I think that we have to keep in mind, however, Mr. Mayor here, that the strategic plan sets general objectives that our directives, our city wants to meet to improve the quality of life at the City of Clarence and Rockland, or Rockland. It doesn't mention anything about strategic projects. The idea is that we want this to be something the directors keep in mind when they argue specific projects. You know, if they fall into any of those categories, that's the idea behind all of this. These are your general goals and when you're involved in specific projects, how do you go about meeting those goals? If you can, that's the idea behind all of this. Strategic plans do not, you know, compel the implementation of strategic, of certain plans. Let's just say that this is a project that will not be forgotten after we've completely revisited our development charge study. And this is in the mix.
revisited our development charge study, and this is in the mix right now, we have to reassess that. I think that right now, council needs to know what are the options to deliver sewers out there, and that's when the staff reports, we've already performed the study, it should come forward, and then it will become clear the directions it will be going, heading towards. I think we'll have to visit or revisit our growth forecast each and every year, you know, you have in your growth forecast in between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and forty, this will have to be revisited, revisited, readjusted pretty often, as opposed to the way we do. I move that we vote on this, all those in favor? Carry them, thank you. All right, let's go on to item eight point four, resolution to extend Councilor Diane Chouagnier's leave of absence until May. I'd just like to advise you that if you have any problems, you can phone up any of the councilors at the table here or myself, you're not bereft of any councilors, the folks will certainly cater to your needs. I would say that Mrs. Chouagnier, I contact her from time to time, I'm pretty much convinced that a lot of her residents contact her and then she contacts us, and we manage to correct any problems that might arise there. I'm sorry? We said until the end of April, we're extending her leave? Yes. Moved and seconded by Councilor Bellengue, all those in favor, carry then. All right then, good. And so, so, anything else to consider? Committee staff reports, bylaws? Councilor Grimaler, certainly, Mr. Mayor? It's a consent item? Yes. Item ten point one, I believe? Be resolved that law two thousand and eighteen dash twenty, being a bylaw that modifies the zoning bylaw for chemin de la Wayne be adopted, seconded by Councilor Sima, all those in favor then, carried. Confirmatory bylaw? Be resolved that about two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-five be deemed as a confirmatory bylaw for all decisions taken that have been taken at a regular meeting of town council of the fifth of May, or fifth of March, adjournment at eight oh five P M.